New Jersey. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. The time is now two past 5:00 p.m. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings Law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council and posted on the Cape May City website and bulletin board. Notices hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and/or video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. The City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Mullock?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen Schwartz?
Here.
City Manager Dietrich?
Here.
Deputy Manager Riggs?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Turner?
Here.
CFO Haney?
Here.
And City Auditor Costello? Is present. And additions or deletions tonight, Council? I believe we do have one addition to the agenda. If you'd like me to go ahead?
Yes, please.
We do have Resolution 19305, 2025. A resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10.4-12. This is to discuss the IAFF Local 3495 Firefighters Collective Bargaining Agreement and Health Benefits.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to add?
Motion to add?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes. And I believe there's another resolution that would be deleted, but we can leave that for your update. Yes. Is that okay? Okay.
Any deletions, Council? Are we good?
I'll just start with my update. I was gonna have one deletion was for Resolution 184. That was for the electronic electric trolley bid. We had had some discussions further after we put it on the agenda, and at this point, we'd like to recommend to withdraw the current Resolution 184, but in its substitute to have a resolution to reject the bids. And we'll reevaluate that bid and whether or not we bring that back to council at a future time. Probably not in the electronic trolley version, but if we bring it back, we'll reevaluate the program and bring it back in the future to council.
So should we make a motion to delete that?
I think it should be...
So the resolution that's on there is for an award, correct?
Correct.
So we would do a motion to...
Remove?
I guess you would remove that resolution, and then you might just want to take a voice vote tonight to verbally authorize rejection.
Okay, so first motion would be to remove it from the agenda?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to remove?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes. All in favor of rejecting the bid, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries? Is that effective?
That's fine.
Okay, okay. All right. With that, City Manager, any further updates?
I have a couple. First, I was gonna ask, we have an update on the USS Jacob Jones Memorial. John Becker wanted to come up just to say a few words really on an alternative location, and then a further public outreach process that he was gonna work on with the public.
John, welcome. Thank you very much for being here.
Sure. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
So for the record, my name's John Becker, and a permanent resident architect living in town. And at the last City Council meeting, we presented an idea for the Jacob Jones Memorial Monument. And since then, our committee has started to look also at an additional site. And what emerged as most attractive would be at the end of Beach Avenue at the Cove for several reasons. Really quickly, the three top ones are probably that it's a much more reverent site in terms of the types of activities that happen there. It also has direct visual access to the ocean and to the beach, and it could also have a relationship to the flag lowering ceremony that happens. And in addition to that, we believe that it's with the expansion of the current, I'll call it patio wall, 17 feet further to the west, there's more than enough room there to accommodate it. And I actually made a little sketch that depicts how transparent it is and at the scale that it is. And the site plan that is in front of you depicts what that might look like, still accommodating the shower and the fire hydrant and the six bike racks with plenty of room to do that. So in order to solicit more public comment about this, because we're really trying to be as transparent as possible as we move through this, what I've scheduled with Paul is three sessions where I would be available to either make a presentation or field questions or receive comments. And those dates are Thursday, the 29th of May, from 11:30 to 1:00. And Paul, I believe this would be in council chambers, yes?
Yes.
The second date would be a little different. This would be a Zoom meeting that I've already sent a link to Paul. We just need to figure out how to disseminate that for Monday, June 2nd, from 6:00 till 7:30. And then a third session the following day, on Tuesday, June 3rd, again in council chambers from 11:30 until 1:00. And so there's the site plan up on the screen there. That's a colored version. So the dashed line that runs right through the middle of the pool vertically is where the current wall is. The wall would be moved 17, well, as being currently proposed, the wall is being moved 17 feet, except we're proposing reconfiguring it a little bit to incorporate the circle wall of the pool. And we also would be considering whether or not it's a pool or some planter of sorts. We prefer the pool, but we have maybe some concerns about how sand might gather in that pool. So we're open to alternatives. So that's pretty much it. Thank you, Paul. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. And I think having, you know, that public input on three different meetings is great. So we appreciate that very much.
Sure.
And so what we'll do is we'll all work with Casey and Erin. We'll get this up on the, this information on the website and through social media to let the public know of those days and the Zoom links to have that available.
So Paul, since you're planning on having in chambers, do you want people to register to know if that will accommodate it versus having it down here?
We can't have it down here. Well, I mean, we'll see how it goes.
Okay.
We have some other functions going on on those days down here. So we'll see if we can, if we get too many people, we'll find an alternative.
That would be a good thing.
For them.
Yeah, no, it would be. And I would, you know, encourage the public to attend, you know, so that they can hear from you about the vision of what this memorial is to be. And to get input on the location is critically important at this juncture. So I would encourage people to, I'm not sure what, any other backup alternative locations, but anyway, good, you know.
So for folks who can't make it, that's why we wanted to have a Zoom session.
Yeah, it's great.
So that could be interactive and could make the presentation online.
That's terrific. Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. City Manager, any further updates?
Just really wanted to give some project updates. As we approach Memorial Day weekend, we're trying to clean some of these projects up, so they're kind of cleaned up. If you've, obviously, if you've been down on Washington Street, the brick crosswalks, they've been putting the final touches on them today. So they're in good shape. They even saw gas lamps on Franklin Street. Still gotta do some cleanup with them. We have the AME Church dedication on Thursday, next, or this Thursday, 5:00 to 7:00, to do the full dedication of the AME Church. And the promenade work really progressing along. We've opened up two of the new ADA ramps. And as they move away from the, you know, we're opening up more parking as the season's open. So their contractors condensing their work locations. And after Memorial Day, they'll probably be buttoning up the first or second week in June, and then they'll be totally out of the city until they return in the fall to start up that project. So just wanted to give the council a quick update on those projects that we're moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. City Solicitor, any updates?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
City Council? Updates or old business? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I asked for us to discuss ordinance 556, 2005. This is the ordinance regarding what's prohibited conduct in the park and recreation area to regulate the use of the Lafayette Street Park nature trails. Since the last meeting, I've received a number of emails and personal communications that people are in fact not in favor of allowing dogs back there. Some of those people do include the Board of Education members. And also, when I, one of the things, a few of the things that the Board of Education members want to know about is, is there in fact gonna be trails? We discussed that at the last meeting. Will there be gates? Where are they gonna be located? When will they be open and closed? And then one of my personal concerns is if the dogs were there, we would have to put the fence in the back of the elementary school to keep them from reaching their property. That area, most of Lafayette Street Park is leased to the city, but that location where the trails are is, we have a, we own it. They sold it to us for a dollar. So I think, I would like, I mean, I'm prepared to make a motion to reconsider this and not allow dogs there. I am aware that there is a person, there is the solicitor from the Board of Education present right now. If he had something to say, I would make the recommendation to have him speak sooner than later to save the Board of Education's fees.
That's fine by me. My understanding was that our City Manager had been in contact with the Board of Education in regards to the fence and the gates and all that.
Yeah, the schools, I mean, we're putting a fence across the entire back. That is a change from the original contracts, and they will control the gate from the school property to the, to the trail. So the school is fully aware of that, that aspect of...
It seems like some of that information has not reached to actually the Board members' understanding.
There again, I transmitted that to both the superintendent and the business administrator, so I can't relay how they transmit it over to their board, but I, you know, that was given to the superintendent and the board as far as the revised fencing location.
Mr. Dietrich, do you know when those two items would be installed? Do you have a timeline for the contractor?
We have not. Probably over the next couple of weeks.
And is the city paying for both of those?
The fence along the back, yes. That's part of our project that we're paying.
And the fence also. I mean, and the gate also.
Yeah, the gate was always part of the project.
I recall that.
We just, we just had to change. The original gate kind of was a little bit connected at the beginning part of the school. The school asked us if we could continue the fencing along the entire back, just in case, you know, there are some open areas in the wooded area.
Seems very reasonable.
They were concerned about people coming from the woods, from the trails, and coming up on school property, which makes perfect sense.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, yeah, we talked to the contractor, and we're just still waiting for them to get a final word from their fence contractor. We anticipate it within a very short time period that it's gonna be installed.
And school will be letting out soon, too, so.
Correct.
Right. So Councilman Meyer, I mean, that addressed some of your, the concerns you raised. There were still others, though, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
I know. We've discussed how Cape May doesn't enforce many of its dog rules currently, but when I went to go walk on the trails on Saturday, there was dog waste in the middle of the trail, just like we expected. And even if we put up a sign and said, no dogs, at least we can hope that most people are gonna buy that sign. I just, the safety, and here's the other thing. I don't know if I mentioned this recently. Two days after we passed this ordinance to allow dogs back there, a friend of mine had his face bitten off by a dog at his worksite. This person's in their 30s, okay? You know, and then when he was trying to pull away from the dog, put his hand in front of the dog, the dog ripped up his hand. That's as bad. And if that can happen to an adult male, you know, in their prime, you know, we can only imagine what kind of risk we have to children in the area. So I don't know if we want to hear what the Solicitor of the Board of Education has to say. I'm prepared to make the motion. I encourage the council to vote in favor of my motion. I'm happy to hear any... council to vote in favor of my motion. I'm happy to hear anybody else's concerns.
I'm sorry. I don't know the solicitor.
Mr. Barrett?
Mr. Barrett. Hello, Mr. Barrett. How are you, sir? Feel free to come to the microphone.
Well, as I told, pardon me, as I told, you know, as I emailed council for the city this morning, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I guess a lawyer will never give up an opportunity to speak, so I'll take it. Yeah, just, you know, to echo Shane's comments, the board shares a lot of his concerns, especially about the dogs. It's a small walkway, you know, multiple dogs, especially in the summertime. You know, we've all walked around and seen, you know, the dog population increases as the human population increases in the summer. So the board does echo a lot of Shane's comments from, from the other night, from last week at the board meeting, and also tonight. It's a safety concern. It's not anti-dog. It's also, you know, a health and safety concern as well about dog waste. So, you know, again, I really was not prepared to make comment tonight, but, you know, to echo what Shane said, the board does support, support his comments and his, in his, you know, consideration, you know, suggestion for a reconsideration of the ordinance. Thank you.
So I'm fine reconsidering this. I don't think we should do it at the table right here. I appreciate if we could just have the solicitor come up with an amendment to it and have it at the next meeting.
We just did something like that when it comes to the trolley bids.
Okay. Look, all I, all I ask for is a little heads up on this stuff. That's all I'm asking for. I'll vote for it, I'm telling you. But I'd appreciate if we did it through the normal procedure, which would be the solicitor writes an amendment, we all look at it, view it, and then have it at the next agenda. That's all I'm asking for. I'll vote for it.
It is technically on the agenda. Maybe not for resolutions, but for discussion.
What you were referring to was the, what the resolution that we removed?
The ordinance, I mean.
Yeah, this is an ordinance, so.
Oh, well, yeah.
Yeah.
It's an ordinance.
Yeah, I think it's a little, maybe a little bit different. Maybe what we can look at doing is voting to have it put on the next agenda as far as an ordinance.
Well, it's going to be, it's going to be law on June 3rd, I believe.
Yes, and then, and then would not be until July.
So how would that work, Mr. Schwartz?
We just, procedurally, we just adopted, we just adopted an ordinance providing for conduct on the trails.
Mr. Gillen-Schwarz.
Mm-hmm. That's adopted. So 20 days from passage, that'll be effective, June 3rd. The procedural next step here, if we want to revisit what's in that ordinance as adopted, would be just do an amendment like any other ordinance. Prepare an amendment to it, and it'll say, if you want to take the dogs out, we take the dogs out. And that'll follow the same track as the original adoption.
Can we start the timeline tonight, or?
Do we have to wait until the next meeting?
Do we have to wait until our next meeting?
I don't, I mean, we could, we could potentially consider, it's so soon after we did that that we know what we're doing. Are we eliminating Section 2 of what we just adopted? It's, we just discussed it last meeting. So I'm okay with that. Let me put it that way. If you want to, I can put together an amendment to be adopted on first reading tonight, and the publication would be essentially Section B 2 that was in the original one would be eliminated. And then we do publication, and then we come back for second reading of that.
Okay.
It's a unique situation, but we just adopted this thing. It's already been in the public sphere.
Well, I think it should come back that way. I mean, first off, if it's, if there is going to be an amendment, other people should have an opportunity to comment on it as, as well. Just, I mean, rather than changing it on the fly based off of this, and I understand the position that, you know, that's being taken, but there are people who would be caught off guard by, why is the city making this change after just having passed the ordinance, and I'm in favor of it, if some, you know, if those that would be in favor of it and anticipate taking their dogs out there to understand why it's being changed in this manner without having had the opportunity to, to weigh in on it. And candidly, even if it is a short amendment, I'd like to have the opportunity to see how it's written into, into the ordinance as well.
The, with just removing language, the second reading will be the opportunity for people to speak. And here's, here's the other thing, folks. We did this ordinance. I don't understand why we did this ordinance. Four out of the five of us, I thought, agreed with me, even though our votes weren't in the other way. I was very clear that I was committed to bringing this up again. I mean, it's also in the front page in the newspaper.
Well, let me just respond to that.
I'm okay with not...
The first time I heard anything about anyone on council being upset about dogs on the nature trails was during second reading, when, when, that was the first time I heard. I had no clue. And had I known that ahead of time, I would have changed it. I just want to be clear about that. Now it's on as an old business update. That's fine, and I'm fine to talk about it. But it is an ordinance change, and I just want to do it in the, in the manner of allows, that it's on the agenda as an ordinance change. Everybody gets a chance to comment on. I'm telling you right now, I have no problem taking dogs off of it. I don't. But let's just do it through the right process and...
I'm fine with that. I'm just making it very clear that I don't understand why we did this ordinance when we have 32 line items of what is prohibited in the city of Cape May already in effect.
I think the reason it was done last time was to get, let's get some ground rules in place for the nature trails. Because there was other things in that ordinance that I think everyone was on the same page about. The dogs was a second kind of B item on that. So, but the options are, we can expedite this tonight in a sloppy fashion, or I can draft something that's clean, that everybody can look at, just like every other ordinance amendment we do, and it's on the next agenda. And it would essentially just confirm elimination of the dogs portion.
So, Mr. Gillen-Schwarz, I would prefer going through the due process. I do hear you, Councilman Meyer. I was somewhat hesitant. You know, I think I relayed that I was concerned about the small proximity of space and, and small children walking, coming up with a dog approaching them. I myself, you know, sometimes I'm concerned about proximity and location of a dog when, you know, you just don't know. So I think each of us, I went ahead and voted yes for it at the time because I didn't want to appear as if I don't like dogs. Because it's not that I don't like dogs, I just don't know every dog out there. So I would think, I do think that there's something to be said about the fact that we should try and go through the process so it doesn't appear that we're trying to maybe shortchange this in the middle, in the midst of it's just been approved as an ordinance.
That's fine. See, the issue is next that we have, we as a city council have to give direction to the city manager, to give direction to the chief of police to what we're doing now.
Okay, yeah, fair enough. And the chief is sitting here, and I...
We could have just done that, but now we just have to do another informal motion. So I make a formal motion that the city manager does not allow dogs on that path, and to direct the chief of police to not allow dogs on that path, and to give notice to the Board of Education that dogs will not be allowed on that path when the date of June 3rd comes around.
So Chief Faschel, you're here listening. You were here the last time when we discussed this. I think you actually encouraged that we consider not having dogs back there for some of the other reasons. I don't want to put words in your mouth and call you out in a meeting, but, yeah. So at this point, was that something that you feel you could execute on, or is that not procedural?
Before we start having a discussion back and forth, again, and then, this is why I want it on the agenda as a, as a full discussion. Look, first off, here we have a $2 million project that was like a 90% grant. That is an absolutely beautiful project that people are going to love. If people really have a problem with dogs on it, I'm okay. Let's get rid of the dogs, okay? But let's just do it through the process that we do for every other ordinance. So that's fine. And look, I want to say this, too. Had I heard anything about anyone having any problems before second reading, it would have been amended prior to that. So there's no secrets here. There's no one trying to force this through or anything. I just want to go through the normal process that we go through for every ordinance. That's all I'm asking. So, and also, all I'm asking is, it is a beautiful project that I hope we hear from the school board about how thrilled they are to have this behind their school, because it is wonderful. And for the school children to be able to learn about ecology and the environment right behind their school, I think is a wonderful thing. So I don't want to lose focus on all of those important things when we talk about dogs. Let's put it on the next agenda. We'll get rid of the dogs and move on. Are we okay with that?
My motion fails.
No, hang on. That's what I, yeah, Shane has a motion on the floor right now, so...
To give direction to the city manager.
I'm fine with that. Give direction to the city manager. It's not open yet. No, no one should be on it.
Right, it's, right. And that's what I'm saying. Is this a stopgap for right now until we're able to go through the process?
No one, people or dogs should be on it at this point. So I'm fine with saying no dogs, but no one's allowed on it until, until the city says it's open. I mean, we're waiting for the completion of the project.
Well, I did what I could, so it's on everybody else's hands.
I agree. Shane, I agree with you. So no dogs on there until the ordinance is brought to the table, which is fine, because it's not going to be open anyway.
Is that, is that a second to the motion, or is that just a...
I'll second the motion. Do I have any questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullock?
Yes. And truly, I'm not trying to shorten it, but we have the budget on the agenda, too, and I think that's important to get to that. I appreciate your concerns, Mr. Meyer. Onto presentation of the security cameras, Gridless. Do you track dogs with these security cameras?
I hope so. Good evening, mayor and council, public residents as well. Chief Faschel here for you again. Tom sitting in a little chair. I'll introduce left to right Rachel, Tom, and Alexis. Rachel and Tom are from Gridless. They sell Vercata cameras. And Alexis as well, she's from Vercata. So she's a rep for Vercata. A few years back, we looked at tightening up security for the mall, parks, and any city-owned properties in the city. The biggest thing for us was the retail theft on, along the mall that we wanted to kind of zero in on and narrow in on. So we, in conjunction with the mall merchants to bid, we kind of came up with a collaborative plan to get more cameras out there, kind of not be the big brother, but at least look at the project. So I'll let Tom and his team kind of push through their PowerPoint, and then just give you a quick demo of the camera system that we're, we're in phase two or three of it. We're going to be stretching along the beachfront, the mall area, our parks, our new police department at some point here shortly, and we'll go from there. So I introduce Tom and Gridless.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the time. We will keep this short. And if you have any questions at any time, please interrupt me. Not a problem. Tom McNeil from Gridless. We are a security camera integrator out of Pensalk in New Jersey. With me today, I brought Rachel, who heads up our logistics and install. And from the Vercata end, I have Alexis here, who is the rep to Cape May.
Sir, could you bring the microphones closer to you, please? More for the people in the back to speak right into it.
Sorry. I was a high school basketball coach, and I figured it was going to project.
There you go.
And I was wrong.
Thank you.
Sorry. I am sorry. I am sorry. So we put this little slide together for you, and I had a really great picture up there of Cape May, and I clicked on a button and it just went away. I'm really sorry. So you did? Great. That's great. That's great. So what we have done, and so we'll go through this real quick. Gridless, we started out, we are a battery company at heart. We started about 13 years ago making batteries for the military. They were in forward operating bases in Afghanistan and Iraq. So these are tried and tested technologies. About six years ago, we got into the security space, no thanks to me. And we have been working diligently to, to, to bring this technology that Vercata has to the public. Okay? As you can see, some of our customers here, we won't sit on that too far. If anybody sees this picture and recognizes it, this is a slide that we use in all of our slides, and it is a beautiful install done by not a great tech. That's me. And that is right along your, your boardwalk area there, right by a steakhouse I'm told I need to go to.
Primal.
And I just can't get in. But that is our unit. So that is what, what Gridless does, right? We, we give you the ability to put cameras in locations where traditional camera systems are unable to go. With Vercata, we can put a camera literally anywhere. We can bring you power. We can tap into power. And what that does is that their, their technology has your cameras recording on the edge. Everything's recorded at the camera. All we need is an internet connection. From that camera, you're getting retain, about 30 days retention on, on your cameras. You're getting analytics of vehicles, people. You can do a search, you can literally do a shirt, a search for somebody that says, "Show me a guy wearing a white baseball hat." And it will scrub your, all of your cameras and present to you what you're looking for. Okay? Again, with Gridless, right, a little redundant maybe, but we're all in one. We can put a camera anywhere you want. If you have a location where you don't have any infrastructure, we can do solar, battery, communications, and put a camera wherever you want. Why us? I believe that we are the leaders in this area. You can go to a security trade show, and you can see a bunch of different vendors putting a, a battery inside of an enclosure and tell you that they can do what we can. But the, the difference with us is the secret is what our cameras, or what our system can produce for you over a very long period. We expect these devices to be in the field for in excess of 10 years and provide you with enterprise-grade infrastructure, being power and communications. As you can see, and, and the chief and Paul have seen, the work of our install crew, to me, is second to none. I was a customer way before I was part of a, a security team, and our install, in-house install people are second to none. And I think the city has seen that through this project. This is just a little example of some of the views that we have along the Washington Street Mall. And we are getting a ton of data to protect those areas. Not only are these reactive, but they can be proactive, too. You can literally take this and say to me, hey, if somebody was lost, you could put a picture of somebody up there. It'll actively search all of your cameras for you to see if they detected that person inside of your camera.
Quick question, just looking at that graphic up there. Is it, is this a 360 camera?
So it's a, so the cameras along the mall are what we call the multisensor. There's four individual heads. So when the camera goes up, it looks clean, but you can then take the four imagers and move them to the, the shot that you want to see.
Okay, so it will do the fifth and sixth, I'm assuming. It'll do a 360, is it?
So, with the range of motion, you're probably talking 270?
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Paul's the engineer. He'd probably do a much better job at that than I can. But I believe that to be true. So we can't get the, the imagers to go all the way around the back, because normally, you're on a pole. So we're kind of limited then by the mount and the housing. That's all.
Just, I was looking at that.
Yeah. Sure.
If I can just add something, too. So for the mall, what we did is we actually went every other pole and sort of zigzagged it so that you have coverage, yep, across the whole entire.
So this is an example of what we're going to have along the boardwalk, once there is, there's some pole work that has to be done. And what we're doing is we're coming out of some locations with internet, and we're going to put a wireless signal down the boardwalk so that we can leverage the internet that is, that you're currently paying for, to get those cameras up and recorded and into your system. I believe there's still some, some other work that has to be done before that is completed.
That current picture is your lifeguard headquarters. That's, we, that's, that is an actual picture of your cameras. We'll show you in a minute. But that actually is looking toward the west, pardon me, the east on the promenade, obviously the construction going on. But it goes east-west. I hit Grand Street, and I have cameras on the backside of, of lifeguard headquarters.
We've also put some stuff at some playground areas, right? So this Cabanas Park has some cameras around there, all doing the same thing. And these are all, if you think of these, these are all, they're all spread out around the city. But these, this is one login that you can literally do from anywhere. This is a browser-based system. The chief can be at home, and if he needed to, fire up his laptop and see the cameras like he is sitting in his office currently.
Just to go back on that, pardon me, Tom. On that specific park, we have, and there's two areas right now that we currently do. There's license plate readers on that Cabanas Park. So any vehicle that pulls into that park on the, near the restroom, and in the main entrance, this is a discussion that the mayor and the manager and I had when we first taught this up. Obviously, there's children there, vehicles pulling in. We'll grab tags. It'll go into the system. It'll go into the system. If there's a problem, I can go in, punch a tag in, or at least say what tags were in that park from this duration to this duration. We also have it on Ocean Street currently, looking both ways on Ocean Street, up Washington Street there, that we have the same LPR technology that we have in our vehicles for our police cars is in the system. And we can search for a tag. We can hunt for that specific tag. If we have three letters, two characters, it'll hunt for those two characters. And anywhere in the city that these cameras are, even on the beachfront, it's going to find that tag and pull it into the system and say, "It was here on this date at this time."
That's a great point, Chief. So, that being said, you can also set, like, if you had, if the PD had an issue with a recurring visitor, let's say, that they wanted to be notified, you can actively put in there a license plate of interest. You can even put a person of interest. If you had somebody going to a park or even around City Hall, and they have been a problem in the past, and you just say, "I just want to know when that person's here," you can set that up in the system, and it'll, again, watchdog all of your cameras for you. This one here is an example. Out by the bridge, and forgive me of the exact address, but out of that location, there is no infrastructure for us to be able to use. So, that is one of the locations that we're going to put in a solar unit for you. That'll have an LTE modem in it and communicate over the cell network, and that camera will appear, again, with that one login on your single pane of glass as a camera that looks like it could be connected to your network.
What he refers to there is the West Cape May Bridge and the Cape May Bridge on the inlet. So, we're an island here. So, when the manager looked at this project, he said, "I need to make sure..." We had a fire hydrant hit. This is really, really, we had a fire hydrant hit near Riggins. And he's like, "We couldn't find the vehicle because our ALPR couldn't pick it up. We had a very grainy video." He's like, "I need to see coming and going of this town, of this island, both bridges in conjunction with Lower Tonsil Police Department and the county. We'll have West Cape May Bridge covered, basically coming over the bridge, going out. This is foot traffic. This is bikes. This is cars. Anything that goes over all day, all night. Same thing in the landing area where our current ALPR cameras are. You'll see, you'll notice them now because I'm telling you where they are. At the tuna club, they're on the poles as we go out. The poles of City Dunes. We're going to tap into the power on these two poles." Listen, we're not going to be a big brother, but we're capturing everybody coming into Cape May, everybody leaving, back and forth. That's the whole goal here.
So, again, just a little shot from the mall. Apologize. I'm the one that put that in.
You even have Charlie in there.
Terrible.
Charlie Coleman's in there.
It's a terrible job. I did a terrible job there. But luckily, our install team came in and cleaned all that up for us.
What you'll see there in that picture, though, you'll see the, you know, some of the infrastructure on the mall had to change a little bit. We had to keep up top. We couldn't make it all historically looking. Sorry. Already left, but...
No, just before you go on, Chief, I think we need to look at our signed ordinance after looking at that photo if we're going to talk about another ordinance at the next meeting. But sorry, Chief, go ahead.
Yes, sorry. He's going to show you some of the actual cameras.
So, I will bring up, for me, it'll be, I think, the best, one of the best views is the mall. To me, and I actually said to you...
Sorry.
No problem.
You have to reconnect.
No worries.
Lisa, was it at the end of your PowerPoint?
No, you're good.
These are actual live photo of your current camera system right now.
So, here we are here along the mall, and you can see everything's broken up into the blocks, right? So, if we took, let's just say we take this as an example here. If you were going in here and you said, "Hey, listen, I needed to look for somebody," and you're not quite sure who, I can go in here and say, "Yeah, I can give the date," but we know, we're not sure, you know what? They told us the upper body was a red shirt. So, it's going to scrub this. It's going to give you, it's called a fuzzy search. It's going to give you a little bit more. You're going to get pinks. You're going to get some versions of red. But the idea is it really takes the investigative time down for the PD or anybody looking for this, and it shrinks that, right? So, these are the kind of analytics, and even with, there are some cameras, and forgive me, I will bounce back here to one of these that have a view of the street.
And the good thing is, too, that if the mall merchants become, they have cameras in their buildings. If they have cameras in their buildings, they can supply us. Our patrol division goes out there, "Hey, someone just stole something from my store." They can give us that photo. We can input it into this photo. Just upload it. It'll hunt from that photo in this system. So, it'll do a face search, or, you know, if you have a grainy picture of a young lady stealing something, you put it in there. And retail theft to them is huge. So, you know, not to everyone here, but to these businesses, that's their money. And we don't like theft in our town.
So, if we went in here and we just said, "All right, listen, I want to see, here's a vehicle. I'm not sure." But again, they told me that it was a green vehicle. So, again, this is going to go through here. It's going to scrub this and spit out the vehicles. It even picks up a golf cart.
That quick.
And I've tested this. It actually picks up scooters. I know. I know. But again, this is the type of system. Now, the brilliance of this system, and that's just for me on my end. I've supported camera systems at a pretty large level. The fact that you can have a system like this that goes out along the city, and you don't have to have a bank of servers here that your IT team has to manage. The beauty of, with Vercata, is that their warranty is second to none. If that camera drops off tomorrow and we find it's just a defective camera, you're under a license. They ship you a camera. It's overnighted the next day.
And it's already happened. We've had a camera go down, and it's been that quick. Literally, you know, pretty much the next day I have it, then the team is here to put it in. So, could you show them a tag or search for a tag? That's Kiwanis Park there, looking for the ALPRs or the license plate readers in that park there.
So, I click on LPR here, and it's going to give me the different, here's the tag that came with that. And if I click on it, it'll give me the actual video of that camera going through. I think there are some other along...
Ocean Street. That one right there.
Right here?
Yep. We're just picking up some of our main drags, and we can cover from the boardwalk. Once the boardwalk camera's up, you'll still get this type of technology to search for the tag and the vehicle type. So, you could show them a tag or a video of a tag.
And one of the things about this, too, is if you needed to save this video with your license, you download the video, and it doesn't go anywhere here. It goes to AWS, Amazon Web Services, in the cloud, and that is stored for you. It never goes away. It never gets deleted. Again, it takes the pressure off of the city to be managing a very large, I mean, you're talking terabytes of data.
That'll load a map where that tag was at some point here. It'll load the map in there. But it does a zoom in on the actual tag, then the location, and it's just a tool that we can use that we've already used looking for hit-and-run vehicles. They get the first three letters of a tag. We've actually found them on the system. So... Any questions? And your buildings and properties, too. Your Public Works on the system currently right now. Convention Hall is on, if you could show them Convention Hall, please. Convention Hall is on the system. This currently, it kind of started also, too, with some of the staff in this building. We wanted to cover and protect them. So, we have access control on the system so we can unlock this building once we get the rest of the, once we get the front door fixed and get the new front door on. That's the last step. We can lock this building down and have access control to lock it down at a certain hour. The employees will have on their cell phones their device to get in, so we can lessen the keys walking around. This is a picture of Convention Hall area. Michelle's office, Ms. Sampson, she's got the beach tag stuff going on there. We see people walking, coming and going. Again, to the public, we're not looking to hunt you down. We're just looking to protect our citizens and our residents and our people and our businesses, our properties. These are all taxpayer-owned properties, and we want, you know, there is vandalism. We had a recent act of vandalism with our bathrooms with spray paint, and it took us a little while to hunt them down. This system wasn't in place just yet, but interior buildings is here, as Tom can show you.
So, we've also done Stone Harbor. We've done Stone Harbor. We've done the Cape May County Bridges also. So, these cameras are all up and down the coast with you.
That's great. Any questions, Council? That's an excellent overview, and I think, you know, one of the reasons, Chief, you did a lot of work to get this going as well, so that we appreciate it. Paul, thank you very much for your support. And I think it was important, obviously, the taxpayers to see what they're paying for, but also see how good this technology is. I mean, if you're going to steal something, if you're going to go...
Again, I'll end on this statement. If you come down on vacation, don't leave on probation. We'll catch you. Pretty simple.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you all very much. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, with that, we're on to ordinances for introduction.
Tonight, we have 560-2025, an ordinance amending Chapter 7 of the Cape May City Code regarding meter parking and incorporating the AME church parking lot.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, Council? Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
And 561-2025, an ordinance amending Section 42 of the City Code to update the policies and procedures for the protection of trees in the city of Cape May.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll...
Any questions or comments?
I would just thank the solicitor for moving on this so quickly.
And thank you.
Shade Tree Commission, thanks you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer and the Shade Tree Commission for getting this together. Solicitor, thank you. Any questions or comments otherwise? Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
We have an ordinance for second reading and consideration for adoption. We have 558-2025, an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank for the calendar year 2025, and we have a public hearing tonight, Mayor.
We have a public hearing on ordinance 558. Is anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 558? Seeing none, we can close public comment. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, Council? Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Moving on to the municipal budget resolutions. First, we have 177-05-2025, a resolution authorizing the reading of the 2025 annual municipal budget by title only.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? We do this every year. Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes, although it would be fun to see the clerk read the entire budget.
I don't think it would be. I don't think anybody would enjoy that. So, thank you.
Call me when it's over.
Next, we have 178-05-2025, a resolution declaring eligibility to conduct self-examination of the 2025 budget.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
And unless we, the CFO and auditor have anything to add, we have a public hearing on the 2025 municipal budget.
Not yet. It's the same budget that we have for public hearings that you introduced a month ago. So, tonight's the time for the public to ask any questions about it, and then you decide whether you want to amend it, adopt it, your choice after that.
Okay, is anyone...
For compliance with all the laws, as that self-exam resolution says.
Perfect. Is anyone here wishing to speak on the 2025 municipal budget? Please feel free to come to the microphone. Seeing none, I guess that's what happens when there's a 0% increase. We'll close that portion of the public comment. Do we have a motion? I'm sorry.
So, next, we have Resolution 179-05-2025. No worries. It is a resolution to amend the 2025 local municipal budget, and potentially, our CFO would like to explain that. Or Auditor Costello.
Okay, yep. So, we have a resolution to amend the budget. We are simply pulling down from our reserve to acquire open spaces so that we can attempt to acquire the open space that is currently available on the beach. It is a $250,000 increase to appropriations and revenues, so it still balances.
And of course, this happens since introduction. That's why it's coming up for amendment.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
And next, we have Resolution 180-05-2025, a resolution for the adoption by Council of the 2025 local municipal budget.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Do I have a second? Any questions or comments, Council? Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes, and I just want to thank our CFO and our auditor, and of course, our city manager, deputy city manager. It takes a heck of a lot of work to get the budget done, but you really did a great job, and we appreciate all your hard work.
Thanks.
Yep, thank you. Okay, with that, on to public portions on resolutions only. Is anyone here wishing to speak on any of the resolutions this evening? If you are, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia Avenue. I have a question about Resolution 182. Just what equipment are we renting for daily beach tag operations for $43,000?
Part of it was for, instead of going out for capital purchase for the Kubotas or the, you know, the equipment, you know, machines that they run out on the beach to drive them back and forth, we decided to rent them this year to see how that that would work out because of the maintenance issues instead of capitalizing that.
These are, I'm sorry, these are the...
The Kubotas that we drive, that the beach hangers, we move.
The beach tag for the beach hangers. So, how many are we renting?
Two.
Two for $43,000?
For, not for, we did that, it was, it was part of, from a procurement standpoint, we were with our normal rental place that we purchased and our rent equipment from. We would have exceeded our allowance under the purchasing requirements. So, when we utilized this vendor, because we could be approaching the bid thresholds and the other pay-to-pay thresholds, our purchasing agent felt it was appropriate to just do the certification that we do this. We don't anticipate spending those kind of funds, but we have to appropriate for it and acknowledge it if it comes up to that. We might get through the summer, and we need to rent some other piece of equipment because another piece of equipment breaks down. This allows us, because we've already done the procurement process, to not have to come back to Council in an emergency fashion to rent another piece of equipment.
Okay, then my next question has to do with Resolution 183. It's the hiring of BTS Clear Services for custodial maintenance services for $42,000. It doesn't list what day of the week, hours, or location. So, I was just curious for $42,000, what we were, what they were going to be doing.
So, that's covering essentially the entire season to have two beach cleaners in the evening time to clean the comfort stations. Public Works did an exhaustive search, and we advertised at different price points to hire seasonal workers.
It was just more my, where, because it doesn't say location. So, they're going to be after 4:00 to 10:00, or?
4:00. They'll be working from 4:00 to 9:00 at all of the beachfront, Lisle, Ocean, and Kiwanis restrooms. So, all of the restroom locations that remain open in the evening, they...
They'll be taking care of them.
They'll be taken care of and rotate around and clean them up and close them at the evening.
Will they also be doing the services for the evenings for when there's concerts?
No.
No?
No, just, they're just doing the comfort station restroom cleaning.
Are we hiring somebody else for the, for those times?
Typically, those are covered by overtime personnel of our regular staff.
Okay. And then my other question has to do with Resolution 186, authorizing change orders 1, 2, 3, and 4 for the reconstruction of City Hall Parking Lot and Claghorn Place. Were they, was that one project or two projects?
Well, it was one project, but several locations.
I didn't know how it was bid. I'm just...
Yes, it was bid as one project, but several locations.
Okay, because I just noticed that all the orders were basically for the City Hall Parking Lot.
Well, it's all listed, but it's all one project.
Okay, I didn't know it was one project.
It was listed as a City Hall project, but it was City Hall Claghorn project.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to expand upon the cleaners, Public Works, the funds for this are really to replace seasonal workers that we were unable to hire. So, in lieu of hiring three or four seasonal staff, we will forego that, use those funds that would have been appropriated for the seasonal staffs to hire the outsourcing because Public Works was unable to have qualified applicants that wanted to work those schedules as well. Or, in the alternative, we did not have any volunteers from our Public Works blue-collar staff that would work that, those evening shifts to do the cleaning. So, that's why we had to look at outsourcing that.
Mr. Dietrich, is this seven days a week?
Yes. Four to...
Four to nine?
Four to nine.
In, no, yeah.
Just in the season, yes.
In season, yes.
Yes, essentially Memorial Day to mid-September, September 13th, I think.
Any other public comment on resolutions this evening? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. City Clerk, do you want to?
Yes. Council, anything to remove from the consent agenda this evening?
Council, anything to remove from the consent agenda this evening? And 184 has already been removed.
Can, can we put 183 as well, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else, council? Okay.
All right, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
All right, so 183-05-2025, resolution authorizing approval of a required disclosure award to BTS Cleaning Services for custodial maintenance services.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, council?
Yes. So, I pulled this because I asked for additional information about this, and I, I guess I want to say that the way that the hours work out, we have one full-time employee that, and then we're trying to hire seasonal employees to pick up the slack on it, but there are two people that are doing the, the job. I, I would love to have management go back out, because we're looking at $47 an hour, between $44 and $47 an hour for two people to do this work versus the contractual $84 an hour. So, I think it's, it's substantial to say that maybe we want to give it another go-around, and we're not quite into the season yet. We still have a month. Let's see if we can put this out to bid and see if we can, you know, look at something a little bit better instead of outsourcing things. That's-
We, we don't have enough time to put it out to bid before the season.
Or not, not to bid, I'm sorry, just, you know, advertise for employees. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Advertise for employees or advertise for another firm potentially to give us a better contract?
No, advertise for employees.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, because the firm was charging, at this point, when I broke everything down, it's $84 an hour for two people to do the job. We currently have a full-time person. I broke that down to approximately $27 an hour, and a seasonal, which I understand we can't get. I understand that's a difficult thing, but it's $17 an hour, which equates to $47 an hour for the same timeframe. So, I just, I just would like to see us give it another good try.
Okay.
Let's see if we can, you know, maybe we need to increase the salary, but not, it's such a disparity that I think- So, what is the rate that we're paying a full-time employee to work a 4 to 9 shift?
Well, that's, that's, he's working over, that person would be working overtime at that point.
Yeah, let's, let's, um, one question, I understand your concerns. Eric, would you like to comment or no? I, I have a question for you, if, if you're okay with that. And it's a simple one. And that is just your opinion on if you would be able to find people to do it, and it's, you know, whatever that answer is, you know?
So, we have been advertising since 2024 for seasonal help.
Okay.
They're not coming.
Okay. Okay. That's all I needed to hear.
We also, at the job fair, had nobody-
Nobody.
Job fair, you know, we even ran, over the last month, we ran an enhanced salary for that. We increased, you know, our normal seasonal help is 17 to 18 for bathroom cleaners. We upped it to $20 an hour, got no responses. And then, that's when Eric did the analysis, if we, we were talking about advertising at $23 an hour, and that's when it became more cost-effective to use an outside source than-
Can I ask, you do feel that there would be three or four seasonals not hired due to this, is that correct?
Correct. So, right now, right now, I'm short, so, right now, I am, I'm short four people right now. So, I basically took that short niche.
And so, you don't intend to hire them?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, but, okay, maybe, because I was on the phone with the manager earlier, we have two people that are doing this position in the evening time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, one seasonal, one full-timer.
Not in the evening, no. In the morning shift.
No, I'm just saying that, that that's what you estimate, that's what you did in the spreadsheet on.
So, in, in the spreadsheet, in the spreadsheet, if I would have it done with hired employees, I would need three people, because I had to have days off, for employees to have days off. They can't work seven days a week.
Right, so you would have two people on at each time?
Yes.
Okay.
And then one person off, and then, so I would need three, three spots. So, those three spots are not going to get filled for the evening shifts, that, those funds that are appropriated for those three seasonals will go to the cleaning service, is what we kind of looked at.
Yeah.
Because the other option would be is nobody would be working, and the restrooms don't get cleaned at 2:00.
Well, and is, when you're doing evening shifts, it becomes even more challenging, and so, the rates, even paying $23 an hour, you know, it doesn't surprise me, you're not getting anyone to work those shifts. I mean, it's unfortunate, but, you know, people just don't want to do it.
No.
So, you know, when would this go into effect?
They start on Friday.
Oh, okay.
If we, if we don't, if we don't enact this, this weekend-
Is not covered.
Is not covered, and we won't have-
So, if we don't act on this, the weekend's not covered.
The comfort stations-
Yeah, right, right. Okay. Look, we're going into Memorial Day weekend.
And I'm the last one to outsource any kind of work.
But, look, I, I understand Councilwoman Baldwin's concerns. Look, we, we just passed the budget. We, we all look at this very detailed. I hope the taxpayers understand that, we take every dime we spend, you know?
Sorry to dump it on last minute, but I've been working on this since April 1st, trying to get, trying to get people.
And the job fair that just was hosted was really excellent, you know, got a good amount of people attended. Of course, you want more, but it certainly wasn't due to the city's, I thought, I saw, thought it was well advertised, and, and, so, what are you going to do?
Well, I think it's, if you feel that confident that you're going to keep this within the budget for what's, you know, and that you can't get the workers, and this is the alternative to be able to service, you know, and where we are in the timeframe, I'm not sure what alternative we have at this point.
Quick question for CGS, with the blue collar workers and privatizing this, does that do anything with the existing contract?
No.
I don't think so, because those positions are still potentially available, it's just that we can't fill them. This is more of a stopgap, I think, to recognize, they looked, and they had difficulty finding people to do those jobs.
And, and we posted for this, we were going to offer all of this work as overtime to our staff-
Correct.
And, and nobody signed up for this as overtime shift work.
That's what I would think that the union would basically say, as long as you've offered it as an option to-
Yes, correct. As long as I go off to the staff members first, then it's not a, an issue.
And that was up for several weeks.
Correct.
Okay.
Those full-time, those full-times are working the morning shifts.
Eric, thank you, and thank you for your effort.
No problem.
I know it's a lot.
No problem.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments?
Just one, I would like to, and I know this is only a year contract, and then, looking at what we're going to be paying this, this service to complete this work, and looking what we could do it for based on the, the breakout, which, thank you for that, by the way, Mr. Przezinski, you know, possibly looking at this a little bit differently next year, and seeing how we can, we can kind of keep it internally, since it's only a year.
Yeah, I, I think trying to look at it maybe more in the January, February timeframe-
Yeah.
Given your experience, Mr. Przezinski, that way, you're not getting to sort of, you know, slay in the game, right? Being a little bit more creative, you know, with things, so.
I agree with that totally, but it sounds like that's what actually happened, and you basically waited until now, hoping to hire someone, and it didn't happen. I mean, I just, just to be clear, I, I-
It was really, it was really-
We can start this again in January, but-
After the job fair, when-
We should, we should, definitely.
After the job fair, when no prospects came at the job fair, that's when Eric really started looking at, he had the uh-oh moment that Memorial Day is right around the corner, I've got no employees hired to do this job, I have to find an alternative as a last step.
I'm talking, you know, looking at the hourly rate, you know, there's sometimes you do sign-on bonuses, there's all sorts of creative ways to solicit people. We could just take a run at it and see.
Absolutely.
It may result in the same, but, you know. Mr. Przezinski? Could be, yeah.
Okay.
Understood, yeah. Thank you.
Just going off that, off that comment, is that's where we would have an issue with a blue collar contract. That's why I waited to the last minute and did this as an alternative. So, we didn't have that issue.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments, council? Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Sorry.
Don't worry.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Reluctantly, yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes, and I understand the concerns, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you for getting it done. Okay.
And we do have one more. We added 193-05-2025, a resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-12, again to discuss the IAFF Local 3495 Firefighters Bargaining Agreement and Health Benefits.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes. New business city solicitor?
Nothing tonight, mayor, thank you.
City manager?
Just two things, I forgot to update. The, so, the Public Works completed the beach mats today and connected from Howard, and they were able to connect all the way around to the promenade, so you can make a complete loop, walk down the entire promenade, and walk back the entire beach access mats to the start of beginning, is one continuous loop.
That's awesome.
So, I just want to say thanks to Public Works for getting all of that done right before the start of the season.
Just stay up here, Eric.
So, to jump on city managers, with the beach mats, two updates is the new trash cans or recycle cans for the mall have came in, we started putting them out this afternoon, and the pedestrian crosswalk for Victorian Towers, the poles are set, we will be putting those signs up next week.
Oh, awesome, thank you.
So, so what he was talking about, so we did have the flashing lights before, it will now be a button-activated flashing lights, which will make it more effective for people crossing there and alert motorists of that there is a pedestrian crossing at that.
So, it's not constantly flashing?
Not constantly.
Flashes when someone's ready to walk?
Yes.
Yeah. Eric, I think, I speak for everyone, I've seen all the hard work that DPW has been doing. Obviously, the beach match is one of them, but you're really, the town looks great getting ready for Memorial Day, so thank you.
And then, I just do, want to do a final update, we did relocate the drop boxes from here next to City Hall to, to be a vehicle drop-off box in the parking lot now that that project was completed.
That's great. Thank you, city manager. City Clerk?
Yes, just a reminder that city offices are closed this coming Monday, May 26, in observance of Memorial Day. I do not have the flyers out, but I'm sure we are still doing our Memorial Day ceremony at Soldiers and Sailors at 11:00 a.m. on Monday. We encourage all to attend. And then, a reminder that the next meeting, the June 3 regular council meeting, is scheduled to begin at 3:30 p.m., and all following meetings during the summer will then begin at 3:00 p.m. until Labor Day. Okay? And that's it.
Great, thank you very much, council members. Councilmember Baldwin?
Just, this past weekend, this town was full between the Coast Guard Community, Jazz Festival, there were a lot of people in town. It was a, really a, a great celebration for, for everything that happens here, so. That's all, mayor.
Awesome, yeah, thank you. Councilmember Bodnar?
The Columbia University project that they were working on regarding water sustainability and the report that they were, were working on, they, the group has completed their, their project. They submitted a final report that has been received by the city, and candidly, I think it's a, you know, my assessment, it really is a terrific product that they, that they put out, addressing issues of the technical and financial feasibility of the, of a desalination plant, a really fine product. Great group of, of students, so I just wanted to thank them for the work that they did, and also mention to, and thank Cape May staff that worked with them and met with them. I know that they were very, very appreciative, I know in talking with, with us, mayor, they, they said that they were, that Cape May was incredibly cooperative. No, no small surprise, knowing, knowing our staff and everybody being interested in the issue, so, but everybody contributed their knowledge and time to that, so that was appreciated. And the report itself is, it's up on our city website.
On the, if you look under the Environmental Commission section on our website, it's, it's under there.
Okay, so it's there for, for everybody to peruse at your, at your leisure. Other thing I just wanted to mention is there was a wellness walk scheduled for tomorrow, but due to the weather forecast, I think it's actually been postponed to next Wednesday-
Next Wednesday at 1:00.
At 1:00, which actually, everybody's, I think people are looking forward to a sneak peek of seeing the, the nature trails, and this will actually give another week of progress to go towards that, so that sneak peek will be even just that much, that much greater.
Yes. Yes.
So, thank you.
Perfect. That's great. Deputy Mayor?
Just to echo what you've said about our Public Works guys have been out there. I've seen them really doing a nice job and getting all the plants in and the flags up for the Memorial Day. So really do appreciate all the hard work and that they, they put in to, to make the city shine. Thank you.
Councilmember Meyer?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to play my old broken record, but then add another song to it. So as you all know, we put out a lantern fly information flyer to everybody that had, receives their water bills. We did get an email back from a resident. My colleague, George, from the Shade Tree Commission went out there. And once we realized what we were looking at, we were overwhelmed with how much we were looking at it. So the city manager, myself, some members of the board, or the Shade Tree Commission is going to meet with the arborist and come up with a plan to do this. So, you know, we're moving kind of quickly with this because we need to move quickly. But if there's anybody else that has Tree of Heaven being on the lookout, we're getting ready to spend this grant money to help people with what they need to get rid of.
That's great. Thank you for getting that going, Mr. Meyer. Appreciate that. I just want to wish everyone a peaceful Memorial Day. Please join us for the service on, on Monday at 11:00 a.m., as the clerk said. And it's always a really beautiful and wonderful service. Also, on Thursday, at 5:00 p.m. is the AME Church ribbon cutting. I know that was mentioned, but just to mention again, that really is going to be a beautiful thing to share with the whole community. And again, I want to thank our, our financial team over here and, and administration for working so hard on the budget. And we appreciate all your hard work. With that, we'll open it up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on any and all things, please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia Avenue. I just have a question about the amended to the budget. So I guess this is for Kevin. You said it was a reserve to buy open space for $250,000. Does that have to be put in a resolution in order to purchase that open space?
I believe that's a whole separate process compared to the budget. I think, I would assume it goes out to resolution that we'd have to...
It actually would go to ordinance.
Ordinance.
So that if, if the city was actually going to purchase land, that, as Kevin pointed out, there would be an ordinance for that. We're not there yet. This is just to make sure that money, there's an appropriation available if the city decides to do it.
To allow us to do the ordinance in the future.
That's what I wasn't sure about, if it was done here or just in the works. My next comment, I just wanted to comment about the possible location of Jacob Jones at the Cove. You know, the Cove is a very active spot during the summertime with bicycles and that area where the new brick is. I know it's going to be filled with bicycles because it used to be all the bike racks would be in the street. So they're all going to be there. And it's one of the only spots in Cape May that you can actually go down and observe the water from your car in the wintertime, or people that cannot get out of their car, they can observe the water. And by putting that large statue there, I think you're just going to be blocking the view for what people enjoy down there. It also, you have to look at safety. People, if they're looking at a monument or a statue like that, they're going to be distracted. And there's already a lot of pedestrians in that area, cars stopping, going, unloading. And I just think it's, it's a danger spot to put another object there for people to be distracted with and possibly injure somebody. You know, I just want to suggest, as somebody had mentioned to me, about possibly putting it down at Harborview Park and then renaming the park up Jacob Jones Park. There'd be a lot of parking for people that they can go without having to pay to park to observe the monument. I think it would be a spot where more people could go and appreciate what it's there for. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. I do encourage you to attend those meetings as well, obviously. Jules, good evening.
Good evening. Jules Rouse, 1010 New York Avenue. I'd like to follow up what, what Stacy had to say. I think putting a monument at Harbor Cove would, would be more accessible to people.
Just be, Harborview Park?
Harborview.
Yeah, got it.
The Cove, to me, is, is a really a sensitive area. And it appears, and I don't know this, Paul, is that, is that going to be put on the right of way for the old road?
That's where that's depicted, yes, would be, in the right of way, whether it's Beach Avenue or Third, whichever, because Beach Avenue really continues.
Is there a conflict with, with, with the state on doing that? I mean, is that...
It would probably need a permit to put that structure there. I mean, we don't, we didn't need a permit for the bricks and what we've done, because what's there currently was just replacing what was there. The extension that we're going to be applying for, we feel is going to be a, a no call-up letter for a permit. But I believe if we wanted to, if a monument was built there, yes, we would probably need a permit there.
Yeah, because there's, that was such a controversial issue many years ago, and a lot of discussion about that area.
We would almost definitely need a DEP permit.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, look, just so you know this, I just, and the whole audience is, we were just presented this tonight, just, just like you. I mean, so I'm sure we all have our separate opinions as well. I just, I hope, I hope you know that.
Now, I'm just concerned, I don't want to see another, a problem created with, with a nice program.
I think it's a serious concern. Yeah.
Because that, as we all know, the sand and the water at that particular location is significant during storm periods.
Jules, just to share with you, I have received nothing but positive input legitimately. So if you don't have it, please feel free to share it with me or any council member about the monument itself and the, of course, the memorial to the USS Jacob.
Yeah, I have no, 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 nothing other than congratulations on the project itself. It's just a matter of where it goes and how does it best serve the city.
So I just want to be really clear, from the council's perspective, not necessarily from any other group. We want to hear from the public about the location, because we don't want to do this in a location where people don't appreciate it. I mean, we want this to be, look, we'll never get 100%. We know that. We'd like to get to 99. So if we can get to 99, that would be great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? If we can get as high as our tax collection rate is, we'll be in very good shape.
My name is Mary Cohen. I live at 917 Queen Street. And I have lived with dogs my entire life. And I've been coming to Cape May since before I was born. So I agree, Shane and I talked today, and now I agree that probably dogs on the trail, which we've already walked many times at 5:30 in the morning, and it is awesome. So I hate to see it get locked up. But anyhow, what, if, are you going to lock it? Is that trail going to be locked? I thought, I thought what I heard, I thought what I heard was...
There's a, from the nature trail, there is a sidewalk that would leave the trail and go up to connect to the school.
I understand.
In the rear, there would be a gate across that so that you could not walk up into the school property and get to the physical school.
Okay.
The school would unlock that and use that for their use, but the public would not have that.
That's understandable. And I wondered, is there any possibility of considering walking dogs the way they do on the Bard Walk at certain hours? Like...
You're, you're talking for the trail?
For the trail.
Mm-hmm.
It's just something to think about. On the other hand, I agree, if I see somebody with a dog walking towards me on Washington or Madison or whatever, I generally cross the street, because you get dogs next to each other in a situation like that. Any trainer will tell you, avoid dogs when you have your dogs. But it would be nice to be able to, they love it up there. Okay. Then other things came up as I listed.
Keep that out of the record, clerk. Thank you.
Can these cameras pick up speeding? So it would be really nice to have some...
They can't.
It would be nice to have some cameras on Lafayette particularly, on Queen Street, which I know it's a small street, we won't get a camera. But the speeding is, is really bad. And somebody said, well, how could they speed with all these cars here? Well, let me tell you, they speed. And Lafayette has really gotten bad, 40, 50 miles an hour. And I walk it quite a bit. Madison also, but that's a state highway, right?
They're both county roads. They're both county.
Yeah, if there's any way to encourage any type of speed monitoring on those roads, starting at 6:30 in the morning, people are speeding down there. So that would be one thing I'd really like to see. And what is the security of the computer systems that are going to control the security cameras?
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
What, what kind of security system is in place with regard to the computers?
To access?
That are going to control the security cameras?
To access is definitely encrypted, but Paul could...
It's, it's a, so those software is not housed here at the city. It's a, it's a software login. You have to have a secure password to get in. It's got 128-bit security encryption on everything that it does. So it's...
So it's all encrypted?
It's all encrypted.
Yeah. So nobody could hack, well, people can hack, but...
You could never say...
Never.
Never could get hacked. It's, it's...
Yeah. And as far as that crossing suggestion with the light, the blinking light, that one on Lafayette by the school is awesome. You push a button, the lights go on, people stop. That's great. As far as the bathrooms, the bathrooms reflect on the city as much as flowers on the mall. And so if you, I've really been impressed with how the staff have kept up with things. But if you don't have people to get in there and clean, that's, that's a reflection on the city. So whatever you can do to hire people to clean, I think is really an important reflection of the city. And I want to thank George, he's not here, but Shane and Paul for coming over today with regard to the lantern flies, because we live in a lantern fly forest on Queen Street, Lafayette and Washington. And they've really, Shane has really taken the handle and trying to help us get this under control in a knowledgeable, and Paul too, in a knowledgeable way. So, thank you. And I've always had great, quick responses from the city with regard to trash at the school or a rebart that was sticking out of a wall at the Jefferson Street entrance, all kinds of things. So really appreciate the quick response. So thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening?
Stacy Shan, 928 Columbia. I have one other question about the security cameras. I guess this is for, oh, Deacon left. Is there going to be any safeguards put into place on who can do these searches so that we don't get, you know, like, the people aren't abusing for their own sake?
Police have rigorous controls, just like all the, all PRs and things like that. They have controls on when and how they can search.
Right. I didn't know if it's like a sergeant would have to sign off on a search before it can be conducted or things like that.
They have protocols for that, yes.
Well, it's in just...
I'm not going to, I'm not going to...
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure.
I'll let the chief speak, but I'm not going to, I don't think the chief is going to come up and discuss those internal protocols on who, what, why, and where. But there are protocols within their accreditation requirements to have those safeguards in place, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Sir?
Hello, my name's Ed Dixon. I live at 3507 Asbury Avenue in Ocean City, New Jersey. And again, I wanted to thank you for all you do to honor our military veterans. I want to thank you again for your proclamation concerning the dedication of the entire month of August to our military veterans. I do need to apologize to you for not being here at the last meeting for that proclamation. I did speak to Ms. Ratakin, and she did give me the date of that, but I made a note of it. And unfortunately, I didn't find a note until it was too late. So unfortunately, my memory is not as good as it used to be. And the, however, somehow, by the time, at, at any rate, all right, and all of you for, oh, I did want to ask all of you if it's okay with you for a copy of that proclamation.
Absolutely.
It is important to me and others that they see how important the military is to all of you. And I want to honor them. I am looking to nationalize that month in our yearly calendars. This is my quest, and I'm hoping to be able to accomplish that. I wanted to know more information about the USS Jacob Jones memorial. However, I also am here during that next presentation of what they're planning on doing with that. So I feel pretty good about being here again at that time. And I was looking to see when that would be done. So I'll be looking forward to seeing completion, as I want to see and offer a prayer for the crew.
We appreciate it.
Thank you again very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. We'll see to him getting a, a copy. Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much. And we appreciate you. And thank you for working with our city solicitor. And obviously, we're happy to, to pass that. So best of luck to you, too.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Public comment? Trish?
Hello, everybody. I'm sorry I look like this. I was out scrubbing my porch today. So, but anyway, I just want, I just...
Excuse me. Can you say?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Trish Turnaby, 719, 721 Franklin Street. I just wanted to talk about the dogs also on that little area. I mean, I have a dog. I think everybody knows that. And he, when he was a puppy, I took him over here to the park, and a big dog bit him. And he's been very afraid of dogs ever since. Now, on the streets, you have a way you can get around dogs. If I see somebody coming with a dog, I immediately cross the street. If I see a person, because he's afraid of dogs, he's afraid of people, he's, he's got some issues. So I just wanted to say with such a small, like, area that you have, six feet, you, you can't get away. And, and where I live, actually, like where my house is, they're on a trail. A dog actually attacked another dog, and the dog was killed. So, I mean, these are all things that you really have to consider. Not everybody's as great as I am about picking up after their dog, too. And I see it in the streets in Cape May, and it really, you know, upsets me. But I just think a very, like, because it's six feet and you don't have that space either way to get away from the dog, I just think that it might be a wise... I mean, I love a dog. Like I said, everybody knows my dog Socrates. So it might be a very good idea just to not have, you know, people, especially with dogs, too. And, you know, when they, when kids see dogs, that's another thing. They just want to go up, and they don't realize the dog may not be friendly. You know? I mean, somebody could have their dog, just walk their dog, but if a child, especially if you come towards a dog. So that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. We, we appreciate your concerns. And I just want to be clear to everyone about the action that was taken tonight. Tonight, we directed the city, the city manager to not allow dogs upon opening of, of the, of the, of the nature trails. And, but we look forward to Councilman Meyer working on an amendment with the solicitor to have at the next council meeting, for which I believe all, all of us have basically committed to, to, to supporting that. So bottom line, dogs are not allowed tomorrow. They're not allowed when the trail opens, and probably will be within an ordinance at our next council meeting. So just, just be aware. Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Seeing none, motion to adjourn?
Make the motion.
We can close public portion and go into closed session.
Go into closed session. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good seeing you. Thank you. Yeah, I'll be in touch.
Yeah, I'll be in touch. Yeah. Let's talk out in the hallway.
Sir? Thank you, sir. Good luck. How's it going?[257.12]
Just no action, Rick Cruz?
No action, yeah. Good evening, everyone. We are coming out of closed session and will not be taking any official